It's time for my virtual Jericho with John Mayer.
Hello, welcome. We've got a special series of three of my Jerichos on the local elections over the next couple of weeks. The Roxy's had a pause thanks to Covid, but it's back with a bang on Thursday, May the 6th. You vote for your county councillors, for Oxford city councillors, and a police and crime commissioner for Thames Valley. Use your vote and use it wisely. To help you, I've invited all the candidates to take part. First today, those for our two county council divisions, Jericho and Osney and St Margaret's. This is how the current county council looks. So that's where it is. Let's have a look at the political divide. There are Conservatives, 27, Labour, 13, Liberal Democrat, 13, Greens, one, independent, what was independent, nine. So that's the seats have been fought over. The rules of the game today are quite straightforward. The candidates are brought on in alphabetical order of surnames. Each is given a five-minute slot, followed by a light to toast in from me, and they'll have a chance to ask each other questions at the end. Let's first look at Jericho and Osney. The results last time round, if you could see those. Susanna Pressle got 58.6% of the vote. Jonathan Adcock of Liberal Democrats got 16% of the vote. Lewis Muddiman from the Greens got 14, 15% of the vote. Jason Fidman from the Tories got 9.5, and David Hearn from the UKIP got 1.1. So first off, in the alphabet, Eve Edwards, Sarah Edwards, the Green Party. Sarah, what are you standing for and why?
Thanks, John. I thought perhaps I'd explain just a tiny bit about my background, because some of that's relevant to why I'm standing. So my background is mainly in the voluntary sector. I've worked for local and national charities. That's been my main career. And during that time, I've been primarily developing and managing services. And that's given me quite an insight into some aspects of what's relevant to the county council, excuse me, particularly on the social service provision. But I've also been campaigning throughout my life, really, since leaving university, on a number of issues, including environmental issues, but also social justice issues and civil liberties. So having moved to Oxford, I've got involved in a number of community enterprises. I'm a community mediator, so I help neighbours in dispute, which again gives me a bit of insight into some of the social issues that are affecting our communities. I'm a trustee for Low Carbon Oxford North, and I've been doing that for several years now. And we're trying to help people in Oxford North and Northern Oxford area, including Jericho, to reduce their carbon footprint. I'm also, I've got an allotment, and I'm on the committee of the Crippie Meadow Allotments Association, and I run a shop there for the members so they can come and buy equipment for their plots. The reason I'm standing is because I really want to see a stronger green presence on the county council. You'll see that now we only have one seat. We used to have several. And Greens have made a big impact in the past on both the city and the county council. One example that I'd like to give is Sushila Dahl, who used to be a councillor in this area. And thinking about the history of the boatyard, Sushila was one of the key people who campaigned really hard to prevent the boatyard itself disappearing. And that was a big community campaign, and the Greens were very active in that. It was under threat. She also promoted and was very instrumental in getting the area to become a conservation area. So in terms of some of the key things I want to push for, under social care, we want to end the privatisation of adult social care in Oxfordshire, which is currently totally privatised, which means that some of the cash is obviously ending up with companies making a profit. With children's services, strongly support the push for early intervention to enable fewer children to end up being in the looked after category. With education, we're rather dismayed at the level of privatisation that's happened in the education sector. But given where we're at, the schools that we do now still run, we want to see as much inclusion as possible. We do understand that, of course, some children are unable to stay in mainstream schools. But where there is a need for separate provision, we want to see much better provision. So special schools do need better support. Under transport, the starting point is to reduce the need to travel. So planning as much as possible to make sure that people can access what they need without having to jump in a car or go a distance that they can't easily do by walking or cycling. We don't want any new roads. They don't improve the situation, apart from obviously a handful of access roads for new developments. We need a massive injection into active travel, and of course, the low-traffic neighbourhoods are an important part of that. I strongly supported the local low-traffic neighbourhood, and will continue to do so. Coming on to climate change, which is obviously an overarching issue affecting everything we do, we need to revise all our plans to take much fuller account of climate change, from the way we use energy to the way we generate energy. And for example, we've got a huge, huge task on our hands with homes and buildings that need to be retrofitted and to be improved. And transport, obviously, is one of the major consumers of energy at the moment. So it's a massive challenge. We need to move further, faster. Issues like waste are relevant. We need a circular economy where we're not consuming so much, wasting so much, which in turn means less impact on resources and less damage to...
About a minute, Sarah. About a minute now. About a minute.
Thank you. So yes, there are a number of things relevant to the county council's work, which impact on climate change. But as I say, it's also about our impact on the planet and resource use generally. I mean, if we can use less by having more repairs, building on the examples of the repair cafes that the community groups have been doing, you know, we need to be shifting back towards a situation where you buy things that are made well, you can get them repaired, and when they finally have their end of life, you know exactly how you can dispose of them safely, without them impacting on the environment. And obviously, there are huge issues behind that in terms of where some of these resources are coming from.
They're going to draw you to those if they can very soon.
Just finally to say that, obviously, the natural world is taking a big hit, has been taking a big hit. And the importance of protecting our biodiversity, enhancing it, ending the decline in biodiversity, is one of the key things that we need to do alongside everything else.
Now, in breaking news, which you heard it here first, the county council officers have recommended that the Walton Street barrier is pulled up, that we are back to where we were in May 2019. No low-traffic neighbourhood, no no right turns, nothing like that, just where we were in 2019. What's your reaction to that?
Well, I'd be horrified if that's where we end up. And it will be a crazy U-turn on the part of Yvonne Constance, the cabinet member responsible, because she did promise that the barrier would not be lifted until we had a low-traffic neighbourhood in place. And I have to say that what was on the table from the council, in terms of what they consulted on, didn't constitute, I mean, a few bans on, a few right turns, left turns, did not constitute a low-traffic neighbourhood. So I think the community will be dismayed. Of course, there'll be some people who'll celebrate. There are people who want to drive through, straight through. But I think that will be, yeah, a bit of a travesty of what we were told to expect. And it's, yeah.
Come April 29th, that's going to be the reality.
I'm sorry?
Come April 29th, if she goes with what the officials say, that's the reality. And May the 23rd, the barrier will come up, come back up again.
Yeah. Well, we will continue campaigning to reverse that. And actually, we succeeded in lobbying very hard to overturn the last officer's recommendations, if you remember. The officers recommended the barrier came up. The last time she sat and took a decision, and she changed her mind. So there's a petition out there for us to continue to support. But I think we also need to bear in mind the bigger picture. And it's understandable if the community is quite confused about the interreaction or the intersection between the different types of transport project down the track. So we've got potentially the bus gates, we've got potentially the charge coming in for vehicles going into the low emission zone. So but I think, yes, there will be a huge mistake. I cycled down to Blackbird Lees the other day. I have to go down there sometimes, going through the low-traffic neighbourhoods in Cowley, the ones that have recently been established. And it made a huge difference, being able to go down those roads where, you know, there are blocks in place to stop people just hurtling down.
Now, let me ask you a question. Your policies, why are you not a Labour candidate? What's the difference between you and a Labour candidate?
Plenty. Do you want me to look at the local examples or the national ones?
Give us a 30-second reason why people should vote for you rather than Labour candidate.
Fine. It's a number of things. I mean, on the environmental issues, Labour is talking a lot at the moment, especially about green issues. But when you look at what they're actually doing, I'll give you an example. So they decided to do some investment with, to make some money to help support their services. Now, they've chosen to invest in some rather risky commercial property. That's their choice of how to invest. We've said, not only is that not a wise move, but why not invest in green energy? I mean, that's a very good horse to back at the moment, investing in green energy. And they chose the other route. That's one example. That we've seen a lot of talk, the councillors have been, our green councillors in the city, for example, have been very good at scrutinising and checking through the things that the councillor have been proposing. And I'm afraid some of it just isn't being followed through on. So it's partly that. Also, with housing and homelessness, we've been pushing very hard to get improvements to address the housing and homelessness crisis. So yeah, there's a number of strands. And I, you know,
I'm going to come up all Christian Graham Murphy on you and say, I'm sorry, we've run out of time. Moving on to the Conservative Party, now they were invited to send one candidate each division award that we're covering. Only one of them accepted out of four. Will Hall, you're a very brave man. Why did you accept this invitation?
Well, it simply comes down to the fact that I think people deserve a choice. We've had in this area, we've had one-party complacency for 25 or more years. And in reality, a lot of people in the area want to have options. They don't want to have, you know, what we've just, we've just seen in the Green Party candidate, which is various degrees of the same position, Labour, Lib Dem and Green is, you know, it's how far you go essentially. Whereas what I'm offering is a completely different package of policies.
Okay, so what are your policies, for example, on Walton Street or indeed on the boatyard?
Well, I mean, so I thought I'd get an opportunity to tell you about my policies in the round first and fourth question, but I'm up for however you want to do this. So on Walton Street, it's worth pointing out that the decision hasn't been made. As the Green Party candidate quite rightly pointed out, Yvonne has gone against officers' recommendations in the past, in the best interest of communities. And I hope that she looks at all the consultation. It's an issue that has divided the community massively. My own view is that it wasn't appropriate for the barrier to put in place without any kind of proper process. It was done overnight. And actually, in doing so, the views of local businesses and working people weren't taken into account. So I, you know, that's why I differ with the county council. And so I'm pleased that they've done a proper consultation this time. I'm looking forward to seeing what the result is. But what I'm absolutely certain about is that it's, it'd be a very brave county councillor, incumbent county councillor, who would dismiss the concerns of people in her division as, and I'm quoting the Green Council candidate, confused. I think those concerns are actually reasonably valid. But I would be though interested to know what the incumbent county councillor actually thinks about this issue, because I've tried to find a genuine public statement, and it seems to be a kind of equivocation. So that's my view on that issue. But I'm happy to tell you about my other views, because it's worth pointing out...
What's your view on that, Will?
Well, I mean, I think it's a shame. I've been on the river in one's form another my entire life since I was 11, 12 years old. I think, without going too much into it, I think it's absolutely crucial that we have these meeting assets.
Now, you're a student in Oxford, are you? I mean, you're not a long-term resident, is that correct?
I'm not a student. I'm a little bit past being a student. I'd be a very mature one if I were one.
All right. But you don't live in Oxford?
No, I don't. I don't live in Oxford. But actually, what you're doing this evening is, on May 6th, is representing someone who's going to be the voice of the community on an organisation that looks after the whole of the county. I think it's a mistake that some of the other candidates make to think that actually, this is a, we're electing a parish councillor. You know, we're not. We're electing someone who we want to have a substantial voice on the county council to stand up for concerns like this. You know, I'm an inexperienced advocate for communities. I was a councillor and a cabinet member for eight years. You know, this isn't paper candidacy. I'm here, standing in this election as an experienced campaigner, knowing that I might not win, but also saying to people that if they are fed up with 25 years plus of one-party complacency, there is an option for them to vote for something different.
But your party got 9.5% in the last election. Can you improve on that?
Well, if I get 10%, then I'm improving. But I hope to get 55%. That's my goal.
Is it lonely being a Tory in Oxford?
You know, it's not, because actually, there's a really, I've spent a lot of time with various campaigners for the Conservative Party across Oxford. And actually, there are lots and lots of people who share a prioritisation of things like ensuring that our local businesses are supported, ensuring, you know, that we have the most Green Council, county council we've ever had. I mean, you know, if you truly believe in the environment, then the only party you can vote for is the Conservative Party in county council elections. That's true if you're in Whitney, if you're in Jericho, if you're in any part of the county, because it's only the Conservatives who are realistically going to deliver because of financial competency, have the funding to deliver on the vision of having a carbon-neutral council by 2030. Every other party offers promises but doesn't have a real plan for action. And I would just say on the environmental issues, it's to combat the idea that Conservatives don't think deeply about these. One of the things that, as your county councillor, I would prioritise, is making sure that we don't allow offsetting to cover up where there could actually be real green measures taken. I was really moved the other day when I was listening to Joe Biden, President Joe Biden's summit. One of the delegates said, I'm paraphrasing, but I just want to share this with you, that the forests of the South cannot be the hiding place for the carbon of developed countries. And I think that's so absolutely critical. The county council is going to listen to a strong Conservative voice that makes that point to them repeatedly. And it's going to listen to a strong Conservative voice that takes into account local businesses, local working people's views. If you vote for any of the others, what you get is an opposition voice that won't have as much of an impact. So, you know, it is, I suppose it's lonely on this particular group, this particular forum. But actually, there are lots of people in Oxford who are Conservative by virtue of the fact that they really care about local businesses, they really care about the environment, and they care about financial competence. You know, low council tax is actually something that a lot of people want. They want to make sure they're getting value for money.
Last question for me. Do you expect the Tories to retain control of the county council?
Yes, yeah, I do, absolutely. I mean, in another life, I'm the deputy chairman political of the Oxfordshire Conservatives, so I'm intimately involved in our plans and building these fantastic plans for the county council. It's been a real privilege over the last six or 12 months. I genuinely believe that, as I say, the county council will be delivering under a Conservative administration on bold plans to build back better, to protect our environment and to put vulnerable people first. And I'm sorry, John, you didn't give me a chance for me to read out my little pitch, but people listening can be reassured that over the next couple of weeks, they'll be getting my leaflet through their door in a Covid-secure way. And if they have any questions at all, they can reach out to me on the number on that.
Forecast the number of seats the Tories will have on May the 7th.
Well, it's hard to know, because people, of course, be fearful of going out and voting. And, you know, they should be, they should do what they feel confident about. If they haven't got a postal vote, they should make sure they have one if they want one. But if I'm going to put my finger in there and have a guess, I would say we will come in somewhere with 100% of the seats, because so many people across the county are going to realise that the only way to vote green is to go green as to vote blue.
Thank you, Will. Thank you for turning up. Now, let's move on if we can, because in essence, this part of Oxford elections are the best of three-horse race, more often just two. Cathy, you're riding, Norman, you're riding a limb down Philly. Why are you doing it?
Okay, yeah, I'm standing because, you know, Oxford's my long-term home. I love this city. I want the opportunity to give back to the community by serving as a councillor and to bring the skills that I've got. I've been an environmentalist since my student days, cleaning up contaminated land. I have a postgraduate degree in natural resource management. I have training in change management. I want to bring experience as a volunteer, I want to, and running my own business. I want to bring all of that to the council, and I think I can make a real difference there. Yeah, I don't know if you want me to talk...
Why are you not standing for Labour then?
I've been a Liberal Democrat sort of since my student days. It suits my wider ideology, the commitment to civil liberties, to diversity, to wanting everyone to be able to live as themselves, to really fighting against things like racism and homophobia. In a number of ways, the policies are similar. But, you know, it's clear that Lib Dem councils like the Vale of the White Horse one deliver better, and the South Oxford one with the Greens deliver much better on things like recycling, on things like affordable housing. That's, yeah, I think the Liberal Democrat is the right political home for me, and I always have. And I, yeah.
About the Walton Street likely decision to open up the barrier. What's your feeling about that?
I think it's, if they're not doing anything at all, I'm very surprised. I thought that what was being proposed, the combination of right and left turns, was not quite enough. And, you know, I've just read the county council's environmental impact assistance on the officer's decision, and it says, this does not support the county council's wider commitments on improving air quality and climate challenges. We need to rebalance away from private cars and in parallel with that, to make active travel easier for people and to bring public transport up to the standard it should be. Jericho is really poorly served, and it deserves a new bus service. And I'm really worried that if we just go back, if we just take this giant step back without any steps forward proposed, that it's, yeah, it's a really retrograde step in terms of the urgent work we need to do on tackling the climate crisis. Yeah.
Now, I'll just pick you up on the bus service. There've been three bus services tried in Jericho, all have failed.
I think it's likely there would need to be some element of subsidy to get it going. But I think it's really important, and I think it's practical.
But it's dreamlike, isn't it? You're dreaming if you think people are going to use buses, especially post-Covid.
I think the pandemic has been terrible for a lot of people, but it is fortunately drawing slowly towards the end. It won't last forever. I'm enormously relieved that people are being vaccinated. I think people will return to public transport. I think people will move to active travel. I think people will still need to use private cars, and we need everywhere to be accessible by private cars still, and to have a move to electric vehicles for those. But, yeah, people will use public transport, and I think we need to make it available. And Jericho is particularly, particularly the bits right up, sort of in the corner by the canal, particularly poorly served on that.
I'm going to ask you one last question. What is it that tempts you to try to climb the greasy pole of politics?
I'm lucky enough to have some flexibility in my life to be able to do this sort of job. I think I have the right combination of skills. I like trying to understand and represent everybody. I've enjoyed being out, talking to everyone. I really want to try and represent the whole community. I don't want it to be a divided community. I want it to be one where everyone can talk to their councillor and express their concerns. And I think I'm in a good position to do that. I think I might be the right person to do that.
You were on my doorstep the other day. What messages are you picking up on the doorsteps of Jericho at the moment?
A lot of concerns about affordable housing and the cost of living generally. Many people who really do want the quieter nature of the low-traffic neighbourhoods. Some people who are concerned about that, particularly disabled people, or people who have concerns about whether it's impacting their businesses. People who are concerned about the state of Port Meadow. Yeah, a whole range of things. But, you know, it's all, every conversation is important. And, you know, I value everyone who brings their concerns forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Cathy. Let's move on to the incumbent individuals. Susanna Pressle, you represent Labour interests. Why should people vote for you again to go back to county hall? And as before, I'll probably give you a couple of minutes and start to ask some questions as I did with the other candidates.
Okay. Right. Oh, so my name's Susanna Pressle, and I'm standing as county council candidate for Jericho. I've had the privilege of representing Jericho for 25 years now, first as a city councillor and then as a county councillor as well. And over that time, I've been lucky enough to know three or even four generations of some of the local families. I've lived in Oxford for much longer than that, having come here originally as a student at Somerville College, which is almost in Jericho. I'm a full-time councillor, which gives me an advantage over people who have to have a day job. I retired from my career as a teacher in Oxford, so I've had time to get involved in a huge number of local projects and developments. I won't try and list them, because I'd rather speak briefly about the future. We must at last hope to get a worthy development on the canal-side site with a badly needed new community centre, a boatyard, a public square, and a new footbridge, I hope, though the latter is now in dispute. I can't say much about that development, since I may be on the planning committee that decides the application, but I am very interested to hear everyone's views. We must also get a traffic scheme, as has come up several times already, that stops rats running in Walton Street, and that's the number one concern. It must also reduce air pollution and encourage walking and cycling. But it must be done with minimal inconvenience to local businesses and to those residents who need to drive. This is quite possible. This is quite possible, I'm convinced, especially if we bring back the Jericho bus or pick me up with a subsidy, of course. I want to hear everyone's views on that too, so please keep in touch. As well as such local issues, I plan to focus, if I get re-elected, on the vital global issues. Like we must continue to do all we can to tackle the climate crisis and the shocking loss of biodiversity. And Oxford is a world leader in some aspects of this work. I'm very proud of what the city council's been doing. We must also continue to reduce poverty in Oxfordshire, build more homes and make sure that soon no one has to sleep rough. That's one of the aims of the county council and the city council. These are all massively important, of course, but as far as I'm concerned, the most rewarding part of being a councillor is on a much smaller scale. It's the day to day contact with individuals who need help with something. And with local groups and organisations, for instance, I always attend the monthly committee meetings of the Jericho Community Association. I've been an active governor of St Barnabas School for more than twenty years. And I'm greatly enjoying helping greening Jericho. Um, a fairly new local group who are making our area more beautiful than ever, as well as increasing biodiversity and helping pollinators. There's always a lot going on in Jericho. These are just a few of the organisations I'm helping. I very much hope I will be re-elected to represent this very special part of our city.
But um, uh, just to ask you a question or two, this is all motherhood and apple pie, isn't it, you know? The boatyard is, is, is it ever going to be built? It, 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 it's, it's a unicorn. No bridge. What's your view on that?
Well, as I said, I may be on the planning committee that decides it, so I can't give my personal views, but I, I quite agree. It is a very difficult situation because the developers are now saying that it, that their proposals won't be viable. Unless they give us only a tiny public square. Um, and um, a, a, a housing, a lot of housing with cars for each house, which is a shame. Because um we were hoping it would be a car free development since it's so close to the city centre and the railway station. But um, we'll have to see what is finally decided and about the footbridge.
Well, let, let, let's talk about something you can talk about, the, the likely county council decision on Walton Street. If, if the officers' recommendations are carried through, which is pretty likely, up goes the barrier. What does that mean for Jericho?
Well, I've really enjoyed going up and down Walton Street over the last few weeks. I'm sure others have as well. Because it's thronged with people. It's like some kind of Spanish or Italian city where everybody goes out walking up and down the streets. And every time the sun comes out and, and people spill out onto the road because the pavements are quite narrow. And it's just been wonderful, relaxed, happy, quiet. Um, but if, if we get the rat running cars whizzing through in both directions, all that will be lost. And I'm really afraid there'll be accidents because cyclists will be in danger, they were before. And pedestrians will be in danger because they step off the pavement when somebody is coming in the other direction. Or when they want to overtake somebody without looking behind them. So I'm really worried that there's going to be a terrible accident. I'm going to try and convince Yvonne Constance, as I did before, that it would be a big mistake to allow the rats running traffic back. What I think should happen is that the barrier should be kept for just a little longer. Until we manage to find a way to stop the through traffic.
Now, you, you mentioned at the beginning you've been a councillor for Jericho for twenty five years. What attracts you to being on the greasy pole? You know, what do you see the, the role of local politicians as?
Well, I became a councillor by accident. Um, I never intended to. I thought it was going to be really boring. All about some refuse collection and public conveniences. And in fact, um, when I first became a councillor quite quickly, I was put in charge of refuse collection and public conveniences. But I found it was fascinating, even those topics, because I had to visit every toilet in the city. Um, we couldn't afford to keep them all open, so we had to close a couple and I had to decide which ones should be closed. And then I was the person who piloted the first curbside recycling scheme in Oxford. Back in about nineteen ninety nine or two thousand, I think it was. Um, that was the green box scheme that some people might remember, where people had to put out their newspapers and bottles. I think that was all at the time, outside their houses um once a week. And we had interesting debates on things like whether the boxes should have lids or not. And I thought, um, oh no, the lids will just blow away and I don't think they're necessary. But then one of the officers told me that research in other parts of the country had uncovered the fact that some people. Um, don't like their neighbours to see what a large number of bottles they have in their recycling every week. Because um if you do drink a lot or if you have lots of parties, you might not want other people to know the extent of your merry making. So um lids are a good idea, in fact, if you want to help people to recycle more. So we learnt all kinds of things about recycling.
Well, we're running out of time, but have you noticed a difference in Jericho in the last six or nine months in terms of litter and rubbish? Is it, is it clean and green working?
Yes, and it's partly thanks to you, John. So thank you very much for all your litter picking. And you're persuading the council to um empty the bins more often and clear up some of the grot spots and so on. So I've been helping with that in behind the scenes and I'll continue to do so if I get re-elected.
Okay, before we move on to second division, do any of the, of the other three candidates, anybody who's got a question, they're desperate to ask another candidate? A short, sharp question. Silence is golden. Nobody, nobody wants to cross examine anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Hello, yes, is that Will?
Susanna, if, if there was a proposal for pedestrianisation, whether she would vote for it as the incumbent county councillor or not, pedestrianisation of Walton Street others?
Um, probably not, depending on the form it takes, because the businesses obviously have to have deliveries.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to ask a question of any of the candidates? If not, we'll move on to, to next division. So that, that, that's uh Jericho and Ausney. Now, next week, we're going to look at the local elections. Um, so before we move on to St Margaret's, we've got hostages next week for local election awards for Carfax, Jericho and Walton Manor. It's your vote. Join us again then. The day after that, as you've been hearing, is D-Day for the Walton Street Barrier. The county decides, perhaps. So we bring you that live at ten AM. Followed by reaction from all the interest groups. Most of them have accepted the invitation to come and, come and uh give their point of view. Both of them are missable and then there is D-Day for Walton Street. Now to the second county division, St Margaret's, which stretches from Somertown in the north to Walton Manor in the south. Last time it was held by John Howson for the Liberal Democrats. Um, now I've known John for fifty years. I didn't know his middle name was Oral, but I do now. Just edging James Fry, that's Susanna's husband, into second place. This time, there are once again four candidates. Three are here this afternoon. So there we are, that, that was it last time. John Howson won, James Fry became just second, Penelope Lennon came third. And Al Wilson for the Greens came fourth. Three of the candidates for this time round are here this afternoon. The fourth candidate, Penelope Lennon from the Tories, chose not to take part as it was inconvenient. And she's actually, she said she was no fan of the mayor questioning modus operandi, her choice. Uh, her, her place will be taken by an empty seat, which will be blue, of course. First to put the case to be counted councillor for St Margaret's is Chris Goodall of the Green Party. Over to you, Chris.
John, uh first of all, thank you very much indeed for organizing this session. This is an important part of local democracy. Um, I'm very grateful and I, I hope we continue with the aggressive questions which so offended the Conservatives there. Um, I'm standing this time because the Greens are the only party to represent a radical response to the various crises that we face. Particularly climate change and environmental issues more generally. Um, there's a lack of imagination in both the city and the county in how to deal. With the issues that we face as a mature, perhaps decaying society. And I think it's about time that Greens were much more represented across our local authorities. Because it's only the Greens that are going to be prepared to take the difficult decisions. That bring us back to a society in which sustainability of all types is absolutely central. Um, a bit about my background, if I may. I'm a writer and commentator, particularly on the issues connecting with the energy transition. I've written six books on that subject. Um, I'm also a businessperson and operate specifically in areas such as car charging. And o- other forms of, of green enterprise, small green enterprises, one of which is in, in Oxford itself, Oxwash. Uh, which is the radical new way of delivering laundry services to the community, both here and in London and Cambridge. Um, so that's what I think the Green Party ought, ought to be about. Let's move just very quickly to a couple of specific issues that have cropped up continuously during the last three quarters of an hour. Let's look at the low traffic neighbourhood and the boatyard development. First of all then, on the low traffic network, um that, the low traffic proposals that have been evolved for Walton Street. And their total destruction in today's announcement by the county council. That in effect, as you say, will go back to exactly where we were two years ago. This isn't the right way to run a modern city. Around the world, low traffic neighbourhoods of whatever form are gaining in importance. And almost everywhere, literally almost everywhere where it's been tried around the world. The response has been to revive local communities, improve the prospects for business. As well as saving lives uh that would otherwise be destroyed by um car accidents and cycle accidents. We need for many reasons to make active travel an important part of our local communities. The contempt shown from the consultation by the current Conservative administration and the lack of clear vision. As to how to implement an LTM from the other political parties means that I believe that Green, the Green Party. And its clear stance on this issue, saying, yes, we want a pedestrian zone. Obviously, people will have to deliver to shops, but we want the maximum amount of pedestrianisation. We'll go ahead. On the boatyard, we need to stick, uh well, it's the city council who will be taking this decision, but the city council. Needs to stick with the objective of delivering open space, very limited parking if any, a bridge across the canal. And at the same time, making the, the housing that's there absolutely sustainable to the highest insulation standards. The UK is way behind everywhere else in your, in your, northern Europe on this. It's time that Oxford made a stance. Thank you, John.
Now, um, okay, let's um start off with the LTM. They've uh, they divide communities. We, we see what happens in Cowley, we've seen some things in London. Are they always a good idea?
Well, the fact is that around the world, they have been shown to be pretty much always a good idea. There will be transition problems. There are always transition problems. But the most successful cities in the world are all increasing the percentage of their space that they are giving over. To areas which are not dominated by cars, whether it be Paris or Utrecht or towns in Spain, cities in Spain. We're seeing this trend absolutely everywhere and we need to take cars out of cities, full stop. Very much more than any administration in the UK has yet, local authority has yet envisaged. People are beginning to make progress. Bristol, Nottingham. We need to push this much harder in Oxford. We are being pathetic in our treatment of this apparently. Um, innocuous change to, to Walton Street. Really, there is absolutely no need to continue to have large amounts of free, free winning traffic down that street. And business would, would very rapidly benefit enormously from its replacement by an LTM.
What are you going to do if councillor Constance decides to follow the advice of her officers and says, barrier up, that's it, May the twenty third, traffic comes back?
Well, as my colleague Sarah Edwards just said, we will continue to fight this. This cannot, this, this is absolutely unsustainable. We cannot continue to do this. So the, 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 the debate, the fight will continue.
And on the boatyard, aren't you being a bit unrealistic? You know, developers are capitalist enterprises, they've got to make money. You know, they're, they're, they're throwing in a community centre and, and, and a boatyard. The bridge is not their problem. That's the Canals and Rivers Trust who's objected to that and I don't see them shifting. Will that boatyard ever be built?
Well, that's, uh, there must be considerable doubt about it, but the fact is those developers paid too much money for that site. And they're now saying, well, they can't afford to do it, to put in the facilities that they promised at the beginning of the process. I'm sorry, but the UK local authorities have tended to become kidnapped. By developers telling almost exactly the same story, unless you do what we say, we will not develop, we will not put in the social housing you want. Now, Oxford City Council needs to be absolutely firm on this. We need to have that built according to the conditions that were specified.
So will it be built? If you're a betting man?
Uh, I, I think the current development probably won't be built, but then the land will be sold and will be a chance to build a proper neighbourhood based upon. Uh, the, the sort of um criteria that we've just been talking about. Now, the current, I suspect the.
It's been twenty years, Chris, you know, you know, how much longer?
It hasn't been twenty years, but it's been a very long time. And that's because it was sold um uh to people who could not afford to develop it under the conditions that were imposed. We, we cannot sit here and watch capitalist enterprise overbid, overpay for, overpay for sites like that. And then try and bend city council in, uh, to its will. Now, it's about time the city council took a much more robust attitude on that. I, I would suggest that it may be possible for the city council or associated social housing bodies to put in an offer to buy the land from the current developers and do it properly. There is, there is absolutely no reason why um we need to, um, we, we need to avoid um public ownership of housing developments like that.
Now, on a national question, Boris seems to have stolen all the green clothes from you. Analysis this week, uh, the conference in October, November. Well, what, there's no ground left for you, but you know, Boris is now the green champion.
Well, I'm very, very glad that you said that, John. I wouldn't have said that ever in my life, right? Let's, let's look at the promise made yesterday to introduce a new target for carbon emissions by twenty thirty five. Very impressive. But in the publicity that came out with it, he explicitly said that he wouldn't be asking things uh to happen which were currently unpopular. For example, changes to uh the national diet. Without those changes, there's absolutely no prospect of achieving the targets. There's just a lot of huffing and puffing. From this dangerously authoritarian Conservative government and green actions have been absolutely limited. Let's, for example, take the initial approval for a new coal mine in Cumbria. We, we're talking here, of course, national politics, but I want to illustrate it from a, from a more general point. There's absolutely no intention on the part of this government to actually carry through. Any of the promises that the Conservatives have made as regards green issues. No. No, 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 it's, the Greens have not been undermined by Boris Johnson's change of heart. A lot of what is being said is mere posturing.
Now, your, last time round, your candidate got a hundred and seventy six votes. What would you regard as success this time round?
We. Were born, we, you know, last, uh, the last county council elections were not a successful time for the Green Party. And um we stand very little chance of, of winning in many, in many parts of the, um, in, in many parts of the county. Why I'd be much more optimistic about St Margaret's is broadly speaking. I think pretty much everybody in this area agrees with uh Conserv-, uh, with um Green Party policies. Now, in a proper electoral representative system, we would be much more widely represented. Um, in, in all parts of local authorities and nationally. Um, we probably won't win in this area, that's absolutely true, but we will do better than we did last time.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, let's move on to the incumbent. As always, I'll declare an interest. Um, John and I were the LSE together fifty years ago. Makes us look both very old, doesn't it? And I, I didn't know his middle name until I, I saw the results. Um, John, you've been a councillor now for eight years, is it eight years? Why should, why should the good people of St Margaret's re-elect you?
John, before I answer that question, I just want to pick up on something that the Conservative candidate said about financial competence. This is the Conservative administration on the county council. Uh, and realistically, I thought we were talking mostly about the county tonight. But on the county council, on a ten million pound parking contract, they made such a horlocks of it. That they actually had to pay out one point six million pounds in damages and legal costs. Uh, and even more horrifying, I asked a question yesterday at the cabinet meeting. Which discovered that there were other areas of the council of business where in two thousand and seventeen. They had to pay out another two point one million pounds in damages and legal fees. That doesn't sound like a very competent Conservative administration to me.
Okay, so why are you instead then?
Well, I think because I've been, you know, I've been in politics all my life because I believe in public service. Uh, and I believe that the Liberal Party, which I first joined and now the Liberal Democrats, uh, are the best way of achieving that. Clearly, the great problem we have in British politics at present is that the progressive vote is fractured, as we've seen tonight. So we talk about green policies. Um, I spent this afternoon at a meeting. Probing why there was no plan to switch school catering from gas to electricity. And electricity driven by renewable energy. And it's also interesting that the. And it's also interesting that the County Council in North Yorkshire has managed to turn all its street lights into LED lights ahead of schedule, whereas the Tory administration in Oxfordshire missed its target for March this year of 40% LED lighting for our streetlights. And we're building new schools, like the Swan School in North Oxford, that aren't carbon neutral. And we're not setting any proposals for the many private education establishments in the St Margaret's Division, which has probably got more secondary schools than any other division in the country. But there are no targets for them to be carbon neutral. So I'm campaigning for all schools to have PV panels or other renewable and particularly for charging points for electric vehicles. After all, school playgrounds are the public asset that is used for the purpose for which it's intended for 1% of the year and for 99% of the year, we can find a way of making it possible to generate renewable energy from it.
We're just on the breaking news about Walton Street. What does that affect you, obviously, because the Kingston Road is in your patch? What's your view? What's the next step if councillor Constance agrees with her officers?
Yeah, I started this debate in 2017. During the 2017 county elections, the people in North Oxford were concerned about through traffic what Susanna calls rat runs. I came up with a proposal to slow traffic in Kingston Road in early 2019. That was sidelined by the officers and we suddenly got this decision with no consultation at all about the barrier. And now we've got another, it looks as if another decision, going back to leaving the new council with a decision to decide whether or not there should be one scheme for Jericho and another scheme for Walton Manor part of St Margaret's, but each of which addresses the question of, do we want to get through traffic out of residential areas?
Now, you've done eight years as councillor. What happens if you lose? Is it time for you to go off into the sunset and?
I'm not intending to lose, but I only have a very small majority. It will be up to the people of North Oxford to tell me whether they think I've done a good job over the last eight years. But let's look at some of the other areas that we've been talking about. Cycle parking. We, you know, there's very little provision for off-street cycle parking by this administration and no recognition that as we've got more cycling in the city, we've got a wider range of cycles. We've got more tandems, we've got more parents who are transporting their children around in cycles. Those cycles take up more room and we've got to work out a system whereby all the road users, pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles can use our roads appropriately. The Conservative administration proposed a local transport plan, LTP4, in 2014. It had three options: a congestion charge, a workplace parking levy or barriers on the main roads. Seven years later, we haven't got any of those. They've done nothing at all in seven years. Absolutely disgraceful.
So the greasy pole, what attracts you to power? Why do you want to hang on to it?
I want to serve the community for another four years. The greasy pole, normally that analogy refers to people who are trying to climb it in politics to get to the top and we've seen some of the things that Boris did to do that. I just want to be there to serve the community in North Oxford, as I've done for the last eight years. And I'm proud to have been Vice Chairman of the County Council for the last two years.
Do you think you could carry a substantial personal vote now after all this time?
I don't know whether there are personal votes in local election. I will hope that people will vote for me on my record and my party's proposals.
Let's move on to the Labour Party. There's no James Frye this time around, he's too busy organising the market and local elections. But Mark Hull, you're representing the Labour interests. Why should people in St Margaret's vote for you?
Very simply because we espouse Labour values. So we want to create a greener city and a cleaner county. And that means working to make Oxford carbon neutral or carbon zero by 2040 and planting more trees, campaigning to clean up our rivers, which is something which I've initiated. The River Thames has huge amounts of sewage now being regularly dumped in it, not just at storm times, but throughout the year. Oxford Sewerage Treatment Works is discharging sewage into the River Thames 35 hours a week. Oh, it's not storming for 35 hours a week, so that's disgraceful and we need to keep the pressure on Thames Water to do something about that. I also want to improve local cycleways and expand bus coverage, particularly west of the Woodstock Road. We want to do, as the Labour Party has voted for in the County Council, increase funding for mental health and youth services. We've seen large pressures on mental health, everyone's mental health, but particularly young people's one under Covid and we need to address that unmet demand. We want to campaign for a fairer deal for renters to improve the quality of private lets throughout, through the new licensing scheme. And of course, Labour Party believes in affordable housing and increasing council housing and we want to build 620 new council houses across the city. And Labour, Oxford City Council has a record, second to none across the country in terms of holding on to its council houses and building new ones. If I may, just say a little bit about myself. I've lived in and around North Oxford for 31 years. I first lived in Great Clarendon Street, down by the boatyard and or next door to it, and then we bought a house in Oakthorpe Road and then we moved to Beechcroft Road. So I know Somertown and that area very well. I was Chair of the Beechcroft Residents' Association for a while when we did quite a lot to create the low-traffic neighbourhood ambience of that street that you now find. I've also lived in Leckford Road and now live in Marston, in fact, but I regularly cycle into Somertown several times a week. I was, Oxford has, I've lived in many cities. Oxford is by far the best. I've lived in London, Paris, Washington, and Oxford is my favourite. I was married in the old registry office. My children were born in the JR, they went to St Barnabas School when Susanna was first a councillor, the governor there, and they went to the Charwell School. They're now grown up. I've got a daughter who's a psychologist and a son who started life as a daughter. So I am aware of trans issues and things like that and the pressures, social pressures on young people. I worked for the government as an economist for nine years for the Treasury, the Foreign Office, the International Monetary Fund and the Department of Energy. I ran a largest manufacturing company in Oxford. Alden Press was a printing company that employed 200 people, all of them unionised. And I commuted for 13 years from North Oxford to London where I was a management consultant, using bikes, of course, at both ends of the railway journey. And I've been a lecturer at Brooks in Business and Economics now for 15 years. I'm a cyclist and I'm a confident cyclist, of course, as you'd expect after 40 years in the saddle. But we need to attract much less confident cyclists on to our cycleways and that's where I think we really need to look at, we can't magic money out of nowhere, but we need to look at how we're spending money on cycleways and stop the wasteful way that the Conservatives are spending money at the moment and start to concentrate things. So if we look at cycleways in North Oxford.
Time a bit here. Sorry, let me, so give you another 30 seconds or so.
Okay, I was just going to give an example of cycle spending by this Conservative council, which, as John Howson has pointed out, is not financially that competent. For example, they've decided they needed improvements to the Woodstock Road, the Banbury Road and the North Oxford Path, three north-south path for cycles. They decided to spend £26,000 on each. What can you do with £26,000 on four miles of cycleway? You know, some better signs, a bit of white lining, you know, you need to think about that, concentrate it. And when you've got a decent sum of money together, make a proper expenditure, pick one of the roads and improve the cycleways so they're actually safe for cyclists. That's what we need to do if we're going to get cyclists, if we're going to get people out of their cars and onto bicycles, we need to make it safe for them to cycle, whether they're carrying children or elderly or just strange to the country like tourists.
Now, last time round, John Howson, run by only 105 votes, James Frye had a considerable personal vote. How much do you expect to lose by this time round?
I don't expect to lose. I shall fight and we shall see who's the voters expect or choose to win. But I'm glad, John, that you brought up that as a two-horse race because your graphic at the beginning of the section on St Margaret's said, you know, this is a two-horse race with, and you know, that's the graphic, the same chart that we have in Labour literature. But if I show you some Lib Dem literature, we see that this is what a voter in, whoever's this, this was Hamilton Road, which is in St Margaret's Division, was being told is it's a two-horse race. Well, the clear evidence from that chart would seem to be, if I didn't know better, is that it's a fight between the Lib Dems and the Conservatives. It is not. It's a straight fight between the Lib Dems and Labour. And you can vote for whichever one you want to, but you don't have to worry about Conservatives winning here. They only got 500 votes the last time. They'd have to treble that vote to win and, you know, the proof of the pudding is the fact that the Conservatives haven't even bothered to show up to answer your questions, John.
Okay, let's move on to the Conservatives if we can. I don't know, do we have the blue chair to represent Penelope Lennon? There she is, a woman who wouldn't turn up to answer questions from me or from you. My view is that if you're Stanford Public Office, you have to want to appear. If not, you get the empty chair, as some will do next week. So what would you like to master? Who knows? Anybody, any of the other three candidates, any desperate questions you want to ask one of the others? We've got a couple of minutes now.
Well, I would like to ask John Howson why Liberal Democrat literature is suggesting to voters in St Margaret's that it's a two-horse race between the Lib Dems and Conservatives, when of course it's nothing of the sort.
I suspect that John, that the Labour Party knows there are, as you said at the beginning, three elections going on on that day. And those voters in that road have got a city election as well as a county election. And I suspect that that bar graph relates to the city ward, not the county division. I suspect that the Labour Party would be putting out one in Walton Manor, showing that they are ahead of us and hoping people will think that that relates to St Margaret's.
No, that's what we put out, John, and it's the absolute truth. And this says on it, I can just read to you what it says. It says it's the county results for Cutslow and, sorry, Wolvercote and Somertown. But this is going to a voter who lives in Hamilton Road. Well, that's in St Margaret's and all those roads to the south of Islip Road are in St Margaret's. Why are they getting literature which is misleading them into thinking that it's a Lib Conservative vote?
I suspect that's because of the change in the city ward boundaries between Cutslow and Sunnymead and the other wards there, but I will clearly look into that. But you've got a bar chart which talks about North Oxford and North Oxford isn't an electoral division in either the city or the county.
And it says underneath, result in St Margaret's Division at the last election.
But in the ledgers at the top, it says North Oxford.
Isn't it good? The politicians argue. All right, let's, if we can, draw this to a close because we've had an hour of it. So just to-
Well, I think we can both, we can all agree that the Conservative financial incompetence is much more serious than a haggle over a bar graph. Losing £1.6 million on one contract and £2.1 million on other damages is really not financial competence.
Yeah. Right, next Wednesday, 5.30, the candidates for the local city council wards, maybe including the Conservative or two, who knows? There's a blue chair waiting for them. It's too late for a postal vote, so you'll have to tell up the person on May the 6th, find out where your polling station is, use your vote. Many died for you to have the right to have that vote. Good evening and join us next week if you can.